2015 regular workshop, school board meeting to order. Good evening to all of you that are here and as well as our viewing audience. We always appreciate when you come out. If you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Legions and the Kids at Hope pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please repeat the treasure hunter's pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you very much. You may be seated. I would like to remind our audience that if we have any unscheduled speakers, please fill out your forms and bring them directly up, hand them over to Ms. Harrison over here to our far left. Our vision, as we always like to go over for the past year, our vision is that St. Lucie County Public Schools, in partnership with parents and community, we will become premier centers of knowledge that are organized around students and the work that's provided to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual. Our promise is to move from good to great focusing on our core business, the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for each child every day, and this is the St. Lucie way. The school board will now open up and conduct our public hearing, and before we go into receiving any comments or any questions from our board with the proposed adoptions, we would ask if Mr. Tim Bajiran would give us an overview in the public hearing on tentative millage rates and the tentative budget for 2015-2016. Mr. Bajiran.
Thank you. This is the tentative budget. The final budget will be presented at the first meeting in September, which I believe is September 8th, same time, 5:05. And I like to use a PowerPoint presentation to walk through some of the required topics during the hearing. The most confusing of which is the rollback rate calculation, but it is a required item to be discussed at the public hearing. And so with that, here are the proposed millages for 2015-16. And the point I really need to emphasize, as I do every year, is that the top line, the largest proposed millage, 5.035 mils, that's roughly 70 percent of the total millage, that's called the required local effort millage rate. Required being a pretty important word in the description because the legislature sets that amount each year, and the school board must levy that millage rate in order to participate in the state's education funding program, also known as the Florida Education Finance Program. The other two millage rates, the .748 and the 1.50, are discretionary millages. The board has the discretion to levy them or not, but the board cannot choose to levy any amount higher than .748 or 1.50. That's, again, set by the legislature. So very little local flexibility in doing anything with the millage rates, other than possibly choosing to lower them. Here are the millage trends going all the way back to 02-03. You know, up and down depends on what's going on in the state economy and what's going on in Tallahassee. This breaks down the total into components of capital and non-capital. It's a little bit skewed because, like on the 2015-16, the yellow bar is actually 5.763. But the reason I like to show this is because if we look back at 2007-8, we were pulling in 2.0 mils in capital outlay, and that's one of the first things that changed when the financial crisis hit. That was a way to shift revenue at the state level. The legislature decided to do this. They shifted money from capital into operating, and you can see that in 2009-10, it dropped -- 2009-10, it dropped 1.75, and then, sorry, '08-9, it dropped. '09-10, it dropped again to the 1.5, and it stayed at 1.5 since then, and that's something that we bring up every year. We talk about maybe next session, we can get some of those funds added back. And it's really important for St. Lucie because we, during our major construction push back in the early 2000s, which we were growing 7 percent a year in one year, you know, we're looking at almost 3,000 students coming in, we borrowed money to build schools to house those students. And that money is being repaid with the capital millage rate, and so we borrowed money based on a certain revenue stream, 2.0 mils. Now we're only getting 1.5 mils, but we had the same debt service payments. Of course, we've refinanced at every opportunity, as a reminder, saving over $10 million with two refundings in 2015 alone. But as time progresses, that 1.5 capital millage rate really does put a strain on the district, especially in the capital projects funds. We hear constantly from schools, "I need my school painted, I need to have Project ABC done," and we're put into a position where we have to prioritize. All right, is it going to be 25 school buses, or are we going to buy 10 school buses and paint some schools? And the reinstatement of that extra millage rate in the capital outlay fund group is something that we are going to continue to push for. In fact, if we added the .5 mil back, you can see, as that red layer right there, it's still well below some of the highs for the taxable, the total millage. So the comparison of '15 to '16, a very small millage increase. You know, the actual value of the millage change, .042 mils, which the 7.241 mils in 2015 applied to the average assessed value, which I get from the property praiser's office, working your way down, assuming homestead exemption. The annual taxes in 2015 for this homeowner, and again, this is average, $601. For 2016, even though there's a pretty small millage increase, there's a pretty big jump in the taxable value of the home. So the annual change in the tax bill is $90 -- excuse me, $90.88 for that average homeowner. Just a graph of the taxable value history, no great surprise. You know, we are starting to see an uptick, but the slope is much lower. It's not nearly as aggressive as the slope on the downward years, from '07-'08 to the $15 million in '13-'14. No great surprise, tax collections pretty much mirroring the gross taxable value. You know, again, starting to see some uptick, but nothing like where we were back in 2007-8. This is a chart that we've used for a number of years now because it really shows the impact on the taxpayers in the county. So back in 2007-8, our tax collections were $184 million. The next year, it was 170, then 142, 131. You can see the drop. So we're starting to pick back up, but we're still only at 127.4 million for this year. That's that figure right there. So comparing to the base year of 2007-8, you know, we're still $57 million a year below, and the cumulative number over those years is a $428 million reduction in taxes collected by the school district compared to that 2007-8 school year. That's a pretty big number. So here we are with the rollback rate calculation. What this attempts to do is explain to a homeowner, if your millage rate is flat, so no change in millage rate, but your property value increases, you're going to have a higher tax bill. And so what the rollback rate does is it says, "All right, well, with your higher home value, what would the millage rate need to be this year so that your property taxes don't change?" So in other words, your contribution to the local government through your property taxes is equalized, taking out that change in property value. And this table attempts to make that clearer. So in 14-15, we had a taxable value district-wide of the $17.2 billion, a millage rate of 7.241, generating $124,836 in taxes. So with the increased taxable value now at over $18 billion right there, to generate $124 million, we would need a millage rate of 6.9. Well, the millage rate is actually 7.283, so what we are required to do is state the percentage, 7.283, as an increase when compared to that rollback rate of 6.900, and that happens to be 5.55 percent. So the proposed millages are 5.55 percent greater than the calculated rollback rate millage. And so that's the conversation, the discussion on the millage rates, the taxable values, proposed taxes, the total budget that is supported by those revenue streams. Of course, we also have other budget areas, food service, our grant funds, special revenue fund. I mentioned debt service, capital projects funds, and internal service. All the funds combined, a bit over $461 million for the 2015-16 tentative budget.
At this time, do we have any board members that would like to ask Mr. Bajiran any questions on his presentation for the tentative millage rate and budget? Okay, so then, we thank you very much, Mr. Bajiran, for your presentation. I think that we're pretty clear.
Thank you.
We're going to move right along, and we will now receive comments on the proposed adoption of amendments to School Board Policy Number 3.44 and Student Progression Plan for Middle School and High School.
The --
Okay. We are going to first ask for any comments from the audience. We're going to stay on our tentative budget rate and tentative budget that Mr. Bajiran just presented to us. Is there anyone in the audience that have any comments or any questions that you may have out there regarding his, the presentation? Okay, seeing none. Are we going to move forward with that? Okay, so before we go voting on anything else, we're going to vote on this particular item. May I please have a motion?
We need to read into the minutes.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to receive the adoption of the amendments of the tentative millage rate and tentative budget. Have we read enough there?
I believe I need to read in --
I think we need to turn it over to superintendent.
I'll need to read each one separately to the board to vote.
Okay, all right.
First one, I recommend the board approve the tentative required local effort millage of 5.035 mils as specified in the Resolution 2015-16 TRIM Tentative A.
Okay, board members, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Hilsen and second by Mr. Ingasol. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Recommend the board approve the district school tax discretionary operating millage of 0.7480 mils as specified in the Resolution 2015-16 TRIM Tentative A.
We heard the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Harley and second by Ms. Ingasol. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Recommend the board approve the district discretionary local capital improvement millage of 1.5000 mils as specified in the Resolution 2015-16 TRIM Tentative A.
May I hear a motion on that one?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hilsen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Recommend the board adopt the 2015-16 tentative budget in the amount of $461,163,639.
May I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Harley, and I believe second by Ms. Hinsley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0 as well.
Recommend the board adopt Resolution TRIM 2015-16 Tentative B, authorizing flexibility with categorical funds. Resolution TRIM 2015-16 Tentative C, certifying adoption of tentative millage rates by separate vote, and Resolution TRIM 2015-16 D, certifying adoption of the tentative budget.
Okay, a motion, please, on the table?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hilsen and second by Mr. Ingasol. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Oh, yes, we do need to go back, Mr. Gent, and do a separate vote on the adoption of amendments to School Board Policy, I believe, 3.44. Yeah, that's the first one, Mr. Gent. And Student Progression Plan for Middle School and High School.
Recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to School Board Policy Number 3.44 and Student Progression Plan Middle-High School as presented.
Okay. Should I ask that first? Okay, before we vote, we must ask the audience as well if there's anyone that would like to come up for comment. Okay, now we'll put it on the floor for vote. And who made the motion? Mr. Ingasol?
I'm in motion.
Okay, who's second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Hilsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0 as well. At this time, we will close our public hearing. We got through that. That was pretty tough, but we made it. Okay, at this time, we will now go right into our special order business, Mr. Gent, and we have public supermarkets, charity, donation that we will present at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Marty Sanders, our Executive Director of Facilities, Management, and Growth, will recognize our representatives and friends from Publix for their $5,000 donation.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board members, Mr. Gent. Thank you all for letting us share a little bit of our story about our internship program for facilities and maintenance. About eight years ago, we started a program, created a fundraiser to generate some monies to run our program. We employ between 15 and 25 interns during the summer in our facilities and maintenance department. It gives our students that are in 10th, 11th, and 12th graders an opportunity to experience the job world before they graduate from high school and contribute to their schools and to the community. We also provide them with salaries for the summer as well. We work with workforce development. They sponsor about half of our students. The other half are funded by people like Publix Charities and our golf fundraising tournament. While I have an opportunity, I'm going to announce our golf tournament for Facilities and Maintenance Internship Program will be November 7th at Gator Trace. So those that are interested, you can contact the facilities office, and we can either take your money for your sponsorship or your entry as well. But with that, let me introduce our friend from Publix Charities. Jamie is the district manager for Publix Charities, and again, we want to thank him.
Thank you all. And again, it's our pleasure to serve the St. Lucie community, so.
Also wanted to share with you, I brought my team here. The two of the ladies in my office really organized the golf tournament, they organized the internship program, along with some of the other people, but the primary movers and shakers, Cindy Hill and Masia Elmarcano. But to show off our interns, I also brought a couple of our interns, so they can be introduced, Jillian and Brianna McGlade, two young ladies. They'll be seniors this year. One's working in publications, the other's working in media services, so it gives them an opportunity, please step forward, to, again, experience the school district, experience the workplace, so it's a great opportunity for them. Do I have anything you want to add?
I really am enjoying this opportunity, and I find it extremely helpful for, like, my future, and I think it's very beneficial. I have basically, excuse me, basically the same thing to say. I think it's extremely helpful to figure out how things work in the work, or operate in the workplace, rather, and see how everyone works together to keep things moving smoothly and how we go out and do different things together and keep things operating in each of the schools. Like, we travel, and we get together, and we all make sure everything is operating smoothly.
Everybody?
You've got a great picture. What Wayne did.
in St. Lucie County. Thank you again. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, and tonight, we do have some unscheduled speakers who desire to speak on an agenda item under the personnel actions, and they will be coming before us this evening before we take a vote, since that it's an item to vote on. I will allow them to come at this time to address the board. It is Ms. Vicky Rodriguez and Mr. Brian Moes, and you can come in whatever order you please. We welcome you as you come up, you prepare to come up, and please give your name again when you get to the podium and your address, please. You have three minutes to make a presentation.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Brian Moes. I'm an attorney. I practice in Orlando. My address is 231 East Colonial Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32801. I'm here to speak on behalf of Jean McGuire and the Florida Education Association. Before the board is a matter that has, from my understanding, been brought before the board back in June, and has been the subject of much discussion among you and perhaps your individual staff members. The decision that you are about to make is going to affect the career of Ms. McGuire, who, by every account and measure of St. Lucie County Public Schools, is an exemplary teacher. I know that you're aware of her history. In 2012, she sustained a work-related injury. She treated, she returned to work, she continued an excellent career with St. Lucie County. In April of this year, through her worker compensation attorney, she provided a letter describing her physical limitations and restrictions. She made a request for accommodations of the school district. I understand from reviewing the school board meeting that Mrs. Rodriguez gave you a very good overlay and overview, I should say, of the current situation and working abilities of Mrs. McGuire. I'm not going to go into them because this is a matter of a public hearing, and I do not care to make that a matter of public record, although I did communicate with each of the board members and the superintendent earlier today in a letter describing specifically the physical limitations that which she is afflicted with. Now, the reason I made special effort to come and speak today is because you are going to vote individually on a matter that is going to encroach upon the Americans with Disability Act. By your staff's correspondence that I reviewed, you, the board, and staff regard Mrs. McGuire as being physically disabled within the meaning of the Americans with Disability Act. She is capable of performing her job as an educator, and she has done so since 2012. The law requires that before you terminate an employee, let me back up, I also understand that the single reason for the recommendation being brought forward today for termination is her disability. She is, according to staff, incapable of performing the functions, essential functions of an educator. In my letter, I advised of the requirements of the Americans with Disability Act. I've engaged in the process of interaction with the school board, which is required under the regulations that enforce the Americans with Disability Act. You are required to consult with staff before you make a decision to assess whether or not recommendations can be offered to Mrs. McGuire that would enable her to fulfill or continue her employment.
That's time. Would you please wrap up, Mr. Mo? We'll give you an opportunity to wrap up right now.
As you consider this matter, I would simply request that you reflect on the communications that you've had with staff and ask yourself whether or not you've been fully advised on the merits of the case and the consequence of a termination, given the protections of the Americans with Disability Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moes. Ms. Rodriguez, would you please come forward now?
Good evening. Vicky Rodriguez for the St. Lucie Classroom Teachers Association, and I want to speak on behalf of Jean McGuire. Jean is not here tonight. She has been through quite a bit, on the agenda, off the agenda, not on the agenda, on the agenda. She's been in limbo for nearly two months as we were supposed to be making some effort to resolve this issue, which has not been resolved. I want to just make sure that you are aware that this issue is not about money. I don't know how else to impress upon you that it's not about money. Mrs. McGuire has been advised of all of the financial aspects of what retirement would mean, disability retirement, all of those things. She really wants to teach. Kindergarten teachers are like that, you know? They just love their kids and they want to be with them. As you're making your decision, I know that part of what you need to consider is what's best for the district in the long run. And I want you to also consider what this would mean to your employees who are currently disabled, whether it's because of a workman's comp issue or because of some other injury or other physical or even mental ailment that they might have. What does it say to those employees about what you, as a school board, believe about what we are supposed to do to accommodate people? What does it say to parents of children with disabilities if you, as a school board, are not willing to make very simple accommodations for Ms. McGuire? You really do need to consider those things because I need to tell you that everybody is watching, and I'm sorry that this decision got kicked down the road so that it comes in the hands of our new superintendent, but here we are. Nothing has changed. Mrs. McGuire is still capable of doing the job. We're still asking you to make accommodations for her that are very easy to make. Mr. Mo's letter does outline what some of those things are. We're asking you to consider them. They haven't been considered. So with that, I hope that as you're voting, you recognize that this is not just about Jean McGuire, it's about a lot more, about what this district thinks and does for anyone with a disability, because that's really what this is about.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Board members, I will now call for a vote to move our consent agenda. We have the agenda before us, and I would entertain a motion at this time to accept the agenda as presented. So moved by Ms. Hinsley. I mean, was that Ms. Hinsley? Mm-hmm. Second by Ms. Harley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to move it forward is 5-0. Board members, do we have any conflicts that you need to declare on any of the items that will be coming before us this evening? Hearing none, Superintendent Jett, may we receive your recommendations?
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, we have received the superintendent's recommendations. Are there any items you wish to comment on or discuss and therefore pull out for separate vote? Okay, I am going to pull out item 8.01 under personnel termination actions of Jean McGuire. Superintendent, may we have your recommendations on the remaining items?
Recommend approval as submitted.
Okay, motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingasol and second by Ms. Hinsley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Now, we pull out, we pulled out the item 8.01 for discussion and for separate vote. And I pulled that item out because I want to just make sure I put my statement on record that I go with my previous convictions. I go with what I believe is the right thing to do in behalf of Mrs. McGuire. I see this woman as a highly qualified teacher, educator, and I don't see hardship to keep her for one more year here so that she can go and drop. And so, you know, I just want to open up discussion with our board members and see if we can come to an agreement before we take this vote, this particular vote. Anyone would like to respond? Okay, there's no response, so we're going to go right on with the separate, we're going to go right on with the separate vote. May I hear a motion for the item 8.01 under termination for Mrs. McGuire? Mm-hmm, it's 8.01. Motion on the floor, please.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Harley, I mean, Ms. Hinsley moved, and Mr. Ingasol seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I oppose. You oppose as well, Ms. Hilsen? Anyone else? Everybody else is saying they approve. Okay, motion then carries 3-2. Okay, we're going to move right along to our order of business. Our final orders of expulsion and stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty and final orders, numbers 566 through number 569. Okay, we have none to recommend, so we will not take a vote on that. We have none to recommend. Superintendent's report, update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to bring up to the podium two new principals that will be recommended. Well, one was approved last week, Mr. Eldridge Gardner, who will be the new principal at St. Lucie West K-8. Come on up, and you're going to get your moment of...
Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Gent, as a graduate of St. Lucie County Public Schools, I am humbled to have this opportunity to serve students in the capacity of principal of St. Lucie West K-8 School. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity you have afforded me. I would like to thank the leadership team at Trejeros High School, who were so instrumental in my development, particularly Mrs. Denise Rodriguez. I would like to thank my family, my children, Tariq Tristan and Elliot, for sharing me with the students of St. Lucie County. And lastly, I would like to think, to thank, and to express gratitude to the great models of leadership that I've had in the bodies of Dr. Helen Wild, Ms. Pamela Dampier, Mr. Bob Kramner, and Carla Moore. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Gardner, I have a gift for you. These are, I knew the founding principal of that school, and these are photographs of the building under construction, so you can take them and, it's a little historical information for you.
Mr. Gardner, is your family here? Can they, this evening?
No, they are not here, in so much that I have a kindergarten orientation, and I was in haste to go back.
All right.
But, Mr. Gent, I would like to say thank you, and hopefully, we will have an opportunity to take a photograph with those who have led such a wonderful school.
I'd like to introduce Ms. Kimberly Jay, who has been approved tonight as the new principal of Alapata Flats K-8. Ms. Jay, come on up.
A little shorter. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Gent, school board members, and distinguished guests. It is with great pleasure that I speak in front of you tonight as the newly appointed principal of Alapata Flats K-8. I am excited to begin my new journey with the faculty and staff, and have heard of the incredible dedication and commitment that has been established thus far. Throughout my 17-year career in St. Lucie Public Schools, I've been fortunate to work with some incredible educators that have influenced me greatly. One of the most dedicated educators I've had the privilege of working with is Carmen Peterson. She has been a mentor, guiding light, and constant support even before I became an administrator. Paving the path for me is another amazing administrator that taught me really how to weather a storm. Thank you, Kerry Wallachevitz, for being my partner and friend. I definitely need to recognize my friends and colleagues who have supported my journey, from helping with my children to bringing me food when they know I have not had time to eat. And that brings me to my family. My parents, brother, sister-in-law, nephews have always believed in me. To my children, Ryland and Gavin, they are my everything. The joy they bring into my life cannot be measured, and I hope they can see how hard work and dedication makes dreams come true. To my husband of 15 years, officially tomorrow, Ryan, you have been my constant. When I have been discouraged, you have picked me up. When I've had reason to celebrate, you are ready to go. I cannot wait to see what the future has in store for us, and there's no one I'd rather be on this incredible journey with than him. As the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." Thank you again for this opportunity and for believing in me, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Just also, just want to let the board know, and you got the invitation, that on Thursday morning at Fort Pierce Central, we'll be having a kickoff with our administrative team and our principals, and I believe you've all accepted, so look forward to you being there. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Okay. Our new principal for Alapata Flats, is your family here? Can we please have them stand so we can thank them for sharing you with us? Thank you, sir. Okay, Attorney Harold, do you have any reports or comments? Okay, board members, we will begin with our updates, and we will start with Mr. Ingasol.
No report.
Okay. Ms. Harley?
No report.
Ms. Carol?
No report.
Ms. Hinsley?
Just one. We should be very proud that our Farm to School program has been written up in a national journal, and it was laid on my desk by one of our wonderful staff. And I think we should congratulate Deborah Weest and her whole team for doing something very innovative to make nutritious food available to our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Hinsley, and I have no reports. So at this time, we will, we have no more unscheduled speakers to come before us this evening. So we will end the meeting once again with the reminder of our mission statement. The mission of St. Lucie County Schools is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, the skills, and the desire to succeed. Our next board meeting will be held, I believe, help me out, August the 11th. Okay, at this time, we are adjourned.